Thank you for joining us for this regular council meeting for Tuesday, December 14th. Madam Clerk, if you want to call the roll.
John Lynn Hare.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Saucetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Katz.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you.
We will now rise and Councilman Saucetta will do the invocation and I'll lead in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening. We're thankful for another day, another opportunity to serve you. And tonight, as we take into consideration several matters put before us, we ask for your wisdom and your guidance and your direction in this that what we would do would be honoring, glorying to you, but also, Lord, would be good for the citizens in which we serve. We ask your blessing upon our council and as we have some swearing in ceremony tonight, we ask that you bless that as well. We ask you to be with our police officers, our firemen, those, our first responders, our military men and women who are working tonight even to protect us and defend our freedoms. We ask your blessing and protection upon them. We love you and ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. We'll start out with approval of the agenda. Ben?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with an added item for consideration as the last item. I'm going to defer to Doug on best way to put that there though, if you don't mind, sir.
Okay.
That would be to add the consideration of a resolution. Does it have a number yet?
Twenty?
Eleven oh two. And the, consider that resolution and staff recommends approval. And I'll discuss a little further since you don't have a staff summary on that when it comes up at the end of the, of the agenda.
Okay, that'll be item twenty-one. A motion and Jim?
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes eight zero. Okay, we'll move on to public forum and Renee Manriquez has signed up. You don't need to give your address, just state your name is fine.
Manriquez, as most of you know my name, I've talked to you several times over the last couple of weeks. I retired on September thirtieth, 2021, as the Assistant Court Clerk for the City of Park City. I'm here to talk about your decision to not include the recent retirees in the distribution of the COVID pay. I've talked to every one of the council members except one. I appreciate all of you who took your time to hear me out. I've had some interesting feedback from council members, mostly how the decision was a bad one. The wording was confusing on the final vote and how you agree that the retirees should be receiving the COVID pay. I don't understand how you can deny us this pay. The three retirees worked for the city for twenty-nine years, twelve years, three years respectively. That's a lot of loyal service. We worked for the city during the height of the pandemic without question. Didn't seem to have a problem with us working here from March 2020 through March 2021 when COVID was running rampant, even through our building. We were putting our health at risk every day, wondering every time we interacted with the public, took a payment, transferred paperwork back and forth, what kind of germs we were coming into contact with. Seems we were good enough to do our job and put our health at risk here for the city, but we aren't good enough to receive the COVID pay we earned and deserved. You said you were waiting on guidelines from Cedric County. Cedric County's recovery plans and payment plans have been out since July twenty-seventh, 2021. Ben, you told me it's been floating around here since July. And you said in your November meeting that this has been in discussion publicly for the last couple of months. And you were paid your first installment in July or August? I don't think that Cedric County would have put out a first installment if their guidelines weren't put in place. So if you've known about this since July and we're publicly discussing it since at least September, and it didn't make it till council till late November, it makes me wonder, was the city waiting for us to retire? As to the comment on how we cashed out on our vacation and sick leave, by retiring, we lost half of our sick leave. And for vacation personally, twice my vacations were canceled because everything was shut down. And besides, one thing should have nothing to do with the other. I believe we retired in good standing as loyal and dedicated employees. We did not simply choose to quit and seek employment elsewhere, nor were we terminated. We just simply came to the end of our working career. Your decision should not have been based on whether we retired, but whether we worked in the height of the pandemic from March 2020 to March 2021. So I'm asking you to put this back on the agenda, do the right thing, and pay us the money we rightfully earned. I'm counting on you five council members who agreed with me during our individual conversations to come through and convince the remaining members that this decision needs to be righted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Renee. Okay, next, Dana, a board award and presentation. You have a new police officer?
Absolutely. Good evening, Council. It is my pleasure to introduce a new police officer. I would ask for Mr. Corsair to come forward. His name is Chance Corsair and usually we will do a swear in when we have this meeting. But we were in a hurry to get information off to K L A T C so that he could attend. And so he has already been sworn in. So this evening it is, it is an introduction and an important one. Chance comes to us with experience and training that is important to police officers. He will go to K L A T C as a new police officer. He comes to us with an associate's degree in criminal justice at McLennan Community College. He has attended WSU for criminal justice program. He's worked in private security. He's worked in juvenile justice system. He served in the United States Army from 2015 to 2018. And he currently is a member of the Kansas Army National Guard. And so we're very pleased to have him join our force.
Great, welcome aboard.
I guess I'll just say thank you for the opportunity, everybody. Nice to meet all you.
Thanks for coming tonight. Welcome.
Thanks a lot, welcome.
Okay, staff reports. City Administrator?
I can't pass up the Chance Go Navy Beat Army. Good evening, Mayor, Electing Council. Just two or three items to update you on. First of all, the draft Traffic Engineering Assistance Program, the TEEP Study. I've reported to Council a couple of different times that it was supposed to be submitted by the engineer company that's conducting the study back, is supposed to be submitted to KDOT back in September time period. That draft report was just submitted to KDOT this past week. A little bit frustrating, but the fact is that KDOT will probably more than likely take until after the holidays to finish reviewing that. So we should be seeing it towards the end of January first, part of February. But I just wanted to keep Council informed. Second of all, the Christmas Tree Recycling Program is from December twentieth to January twenty-first. Residents can take their trees to Hat McLennan Park or any one of any other of the twenty Cedric County locations and they can help themselves to some free mulch while they're there. A listing of all the sites is on the city's website as well as our Facebook page. The installation of the ADA ramps have started as of this past week. They're along the sidewalks going up under Interstate 135 along 61st and should be completed towards the end of this next weekend. And then finally, at the last meeting, Council requested an update on the taxes for Echo Hills. As of right now, they are still three years in arrears and their next current due date is December twentieth. And so far has not paid anything to date this year. Pending any questions, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Melvin?
I got a question. The sidewalks along Fifty-third Street where they've put the gas line in, they've got some bad spots there that they haven't fixed yet. Are they fixing the, are they going to fix those?
Sir, I'd either have to defer to Simon or get back to you on that.
Okay, they got, I think it looks like asphalt in there right now, so.
There we go, sir.
So the Kansas Gas is the one, of course, installing a gas line over there. They will be fixing the sidewalks or waiting on the concrete contractor to come in to do that. But they've assured me that they will be fixed. We also have other areas of town like such as across city, the, the, the street from here to City Hall where they don't have the ADA pad in there. They're supposed to fix that as well. Some other areas, curbing gutters, little minor things. But we're definitely keeping track of all that and make sure that'll get fixed as soon as they get to it.
Thank you. Tom?
I just have something I'm going to bring up again. I brought it up a couple of months ago. I know you brought it up about a month ago. Traffic lights on Fifty-third Street are going to become a necessity before long, especially with apartments going in down on the east side. Five thirty the other night, traffic was backed over the hill to the east on Fifty-third Street to Hydraulic and it was as far south as you could see. Backed up on the interstate at one thirty-five and you couldn't get out of the hotel or Primm Road is up there on Air Cap area. So the traffic, it's different times of the day, but it's heavy sometimes of the day. And if you get semis up there getting off the interstate, nobody goes anywhere because they can't get out in traffic. So they don't get a gap enough to do that.
Yes, sir, and I can confirm in the draft, a TEEP study report that is being forwarded on to KDOT, it has supported all three of the locations on Fifty-third Street.
Thank you.
Both northbound, southbound, as well as Air Cap.
Okay. Hydraulics an issue too, there is becoming one, so. Thank you. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Jim?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Brandy?
I second it.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Okay, under old business, consider approval of the 2021 amended land bank budget. Dee?
Good evening. The land bank is required to follow the same budget process as other governmental entities and a public hearing and adoption is therefore required to amend the budget. However, the land bank statutes state that no budget shall be adopted by the land bank board until it has been submitted to, reviewed, and approved by the governing body. In January and February this year, the land bank sold the remaining one hundred and thirteen lots and three reserves and the high-rise second edition. Upon closing, proceeds of each of those sales were deposited to the land bank. Funds were then transferred to the city's bond and interest fund to assist in making the bond payments on the drainage and water improvements that were previously made for the benefits of those lots. The land bank budget is being amended to cover the amount of that transfer and also the amount of the remaining cash balance in order that the remaining funds could be spent if the need were to arise by the end of the year. Staff recommends holding the public hearing, followed by approval to adopt the amended Park City Kansas Land Bank budget in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Sure.
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve adoption of the amended Park City Kansas.
Excuse me, we need to hold a public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing at seven thirteen PM. Does anybody wish to speak on that? Okay, nobody here to speak and I've just switched to seven fourteen. So we'll close the public hearing with nobody speaking. Okay, Ben?
Now I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the adoption of the amended Park City Kansas Land Bank budget in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, sorry. Seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. There we go. I'll learn to speak.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no further comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes eight zero. Okay, now we'll recess from our council meeting and enter into our land bank meeting. Okay. It's called to order. Item two, hold a public hearing and consider adoption of the 2021 land bank budget amendment. The amended Park City Kansas land bank budget in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. Okay, motion by Tom. Ben?
Second.
Motion by Tom, second by Ben. Seeing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Okay, we will adjourn as the land bank and reconvene as the city council. Welcome back. Continuing with old business, item nine. Dee?
A little like a boomerang. Staff has projected expenditures through the end of 2021 and recommends amending the Special Streets and Highways Fund, Utility Fund, and the Events Fund. The Special Streets and Highway Fund is projected to exceed the budget by forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. This is due to the Street Improvement Program bids coming in higher than anticipated during the budget process and also the purchase of a clam bucket for the loader that was damaged in an accident. Staff recommends the budget be increased from eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars to nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars, which includes an additional fifty thousand over the projected expenditures for such things as snow removal and any unforeseen events that may arise. The Utility Fund includes the Water, Sewer, and Trash Departments. The Water and Trash Departments were projected to exceed budget by a hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars respectively. The primary reasons the Water Department is projected to be overspent are the purchase of additional water meters due to growth and replacement, the Wilson and Company contract for the evaluation of water and sewer distribution systems, and CCUA water purchases from the City of Wichita. The Trash Department is projected to be overspent due to paying the full amount bill each month rather than a computed amount based on the city's collections. Staff recommends amending the total Utility Fund budget from four million, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars to four million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and eight dollars. This includes an additional hundred, hundred thousand dollars over the projected expenditures in order to provide the city with additional budget authority in the event there are costly and unforeseen events that arise. For example, since the sewer fund is all this, also in this funds sewer lift station issues or water main breaks and things of that nature. The Events Fund is projected to exceed budget due to the amount of donations received this year exceeding the amount initially anticipated when the budget was adopted, thus allowing additional spending on events. Staff remains, recommends amending the budget from twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to thirty-three thousand dollars. A public hearing and adoption are required to amend these three budgets. The notice of hearing was published in the Ark Valley News on December second. If Council approves this amendment, again, please remember to stop at Marlowe's desk before you leave and sign the certificate.
Thank you. Ben?
Yeah, so Dee, on the Events Fund, you mentioned that the reason that the spending increased was because of contributions that have gone on to.
That's correct.
So that has offset there. We just need to, we need to adjust the budget for the actual expenditures amount.
Correct.
So we didn't spend anything we didn't have in terms of revenue coming in off that.
You are correct.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Do we have to have the public hearing?
Yes, we need to do that first. Yes, sir. Thank you, good job. Nineteen twenty, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on behalf of this budget amendment? May come forward. Awkward silence. In case someone comes running in the door. Okay, hearing nobody. We'll close this hearing at seven twenty-one. Ben?
I make motion to approve adoption of the amended budgets for the Special Streets and Highways Fund in the amount of nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-two. Utility Fund in the amount of four million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and the Events Fund in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars.
Melvin?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Melvin. Okay, we have a motion by Ben, a second by Melvin. Seeing no further comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Moving to item ten. Dee?
Accounts that are likely to be uncollectible should be written off annually to avoid accounts receivable balances becoming reasonably high. As I've mentioned to you before, Park City had not previously written off balances on old utility accounts for years 2017 through 2020. But those write-offs have now been completed and are ready for council's approval. The write-off process removes the bills from accounts receivable and charges the bad debt expenditure accounts. It also moves the accounts to a bad debt section of INCODE Financial System where we do continue to try to collect. In future years, write-offs of the prior year's unpaid balance will be brought to you annually. So for example, at the end of 2022, we'll be asking for approval for the 2021 debts. Once the 2017 through 2020 accounts were written off, staff immediately began sending them to the Kansas Set Off Program for collection. They finished with 2017 and 2018 and now be working on the 2019 and 2020 debts in an attempt to have them all submitted prior to when the state begins sending out income tax refunds as that is our biggest opportunity for collections. In addition to income tax refunds, the state also holds from state payroll, from homestead tax refunds, from unclaimed property, from capers, and from misceleous estate payments including lottery winnings. Kansas also reciprocates with the four surrounding states. So if one of the delinquent debt holders were to move across to a state that's adjacent to us, that state would also be attempting to collect for us. Any questions?
Brandy?
Are these write-offs there strictly for utility accounts?
Yes.
And then how come, so you're not going to send the 2021 write-offs till the end of 2022? How come we're waiting a year to send the write-offs?
To send them to set off?
Yeah.
We do, as, the set off requires three forms of notice. And as we are sending those notices, we do start to collect on them. So it gives people a period of time to attempt to pay before we do pursue other routes. Because at that point, we add a twenty-five percent administrative fee for all of our work. And the state also charges a fee. And so there's, there's a lot of work involved in that process as we do allow them the opportunity to pay. I will tell you, it's also somewhat to keep us organized because we have a system of what happens when they don't move to the bad debt section until they're written off. That's part of the write-off process. So if you've got some that are in current utility accounts and some that are in bad debts, it gets very confusing to staff what they're dealing with and how they need to handle it.
Okay, and then, so out of these balances for all these years, approximately how many accounts were these that we ended up writing off?
The number of accounts?
Yeah.
I've got that, it might take me a little while. I've got the list, but it'd take me a little while to count them, but I can let you know after the meeting.
I'm just curious how many we let go that long without trying to collect on? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I've entertained a motion. Jim?
I don't have any questions, so I would move to approve the 2017 write-offs in the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred and three dollars and forty cents, the 2018 write-offs in the amount of twenty thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-eight cents, the 2019 write-offs in the amount of twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and nineteen cents, and the 2020 write-offs in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-one cents.
Okay, I'll second it. Any discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Item eleven, Sean?
Yes, this is to discuss and consider change orders number four, five, six, and seven for the Seventy-seventh Street Roundabout Project. Back in May, Council approved a construction contract with Don Linger for improvements to the Seventy-seventh and Broadway intersection as well as along Seventy-seventh Street between the intersection and Interstate 135. The project was a KDOT Economic Development Program and also included Cedric County and Valley Center. Don Linger's combined bid was just under one point two million and included the intersection, which was one million, twenty thousand, and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents and the Mill and Overlay of Seventy-seventh Street for just over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The bid itself was three hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars less than the engineer's estimate for Park City's portion of the project. Don Linger provided and Council approved a previous change order to extend the Mill and Overlay east from the Interstate 135 to Hydraulic Avenue for a cost of two hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-two cents. Predicated on estimates attached is change order number four for changing the notice to proceed date to no later than May first, 2022 at zero cost. And the reason why that is being done is because the weather just simply got too cold for them to do the Mill and Overlay. So they pushed it on to the warmer season. Change order number five is for additional thermal crack repair for twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Change order number six was for additional rip wrap for three thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars. And finally, change order number seven was additional traffic control that was requested specifically by the city throughout the construction process. All three of the change orders totaled twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and four cents. It is budgeted and staff recommends approval.
Melvin?
I'll make a motion to approve the authorization of the mayor to sign, to sign the change order number four, five, six, and seven in the amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and four cents to be paid out of the capital projects fund.
George Glover?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Melvin, a second by George Glover. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Okay, special recognition for outgoing council members. Mayor Mann was not able to make it tonight, but we do have a plaque for him that. Mayor Mann was not able to make it tonight, but we do have a plaque for him that Sean and I will get with him and present it to him. So I guess I'll turn it over to Melvin for your parting words. It's your time to say anything you want about this.
Well, I want to say I appreciate the citizens of Park City allowing me to serve them for the many years I've been on here on council and on the special events committee and Park and Rec Board and everything. We've had several fun times there, all the events we've had in the city, you know, the fishing derbies and the caroling in the park, or caroling through the city, I guess it was, and our trip with Madison there on the seniors out west there, and special time with Bruce going up to the Tree City USA to get our awards for that. And that's about all I had there. It's been interesting. It's been fun.
Ben?
Yeah, so I actually had a dream about this last night. Weird thing. I was, I wasn't going to be able to do it because I thought I was going to tear up, but I'm immensely thankful for Melvin and for your service to our city and for your friendship to me over the past four years. I appreciate each one of our council members, but I especially appreciate Melvin because he was the first one that really reached out and included me when I was sworn in four years ago. So I'm thankful for that. I'm thankful for that we can agree and we can disagree and we can be friends, and I think the world needs more of that all around. And so I'm immensely thankful for the opportunity that I've had to work with Melvin over these past four years.
Thank you. George Glover?
Yeah, I also want to say Melvin and I go way back, eight years ago, when we first came on the council, and I appreciate Melvin's, just his friendship, you know, and walking alongside me and me walking alongside him in the first part of being on the council. Melvin and I have been part, Melvin's been part of the community, just the events that we've been doing, the fishing derby and a lot of the events that we did in the city back when it was the events committee, and Melvin was a big part of that, and some other staff members here were a big part of that as well. So I appreciate Melvin's efforts in that and all he meant to the city, but also to me as well as a friend. So we're going to miss you, Melvin. Thank you.
George Capps?
Well, I'm certainly going to miss Melvin. I'll tell a story about him, you know, a lot of people don't know this, and I can't say this without including Mr. Jones, Tom Jones, in it too, but back in 2018 during a medical procedure, I had a stroke, lost part of my vision, and I couldn't drive for a couple of years. And I'll tell you what, Mr. Melvin Kerr made sure that I had a ride to all the city deals and other things. He was there for me. I mean, that's what friends are, and if there ever was a good neighbor Sam, it is Melvin Kerr. And to him and John, they just took me under their wing and helped me through a very difficult time in my life, and that is what a true friend is, and I'm certainly going to miss his influence and counsel on this council. Thank you, Melvin.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you. One other thing, I want to say thank you to Sean and Tracy. That fits me appropriate.
If someone could come forward and do a photo, please? Thank you for your eight years of service to the citizens of Park City.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll recess for 15 minutes.
But I know the old ones.
You dying? Seven forty-eight, we will reconvene. New business is item twelve, swearing in of elected officials. Do Kyle first or me first? I, I will say this, Charlie was not here tonight, he, he, and he okayed me saying this, but I, yet they have a COVID outbreak in their family. So he's a home, watching from home. So we'll do his swearing in later. Thank you. Okay, we'll start with George then.
Then I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
Discharge the duties of councilmember. Discharge the duties of councilmember.
Swear.
Have you fallen asleep yet?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Then I will support the Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully to the best of my ability.
Believe to the best of my ability.
All right, I guess we'll get to work. Uh, moving on to item thirteen. Discuss and consider council liaisons. We'll start. Well, I'll start, I'll start from the bottom of my list here. Planning and zoning, Board of Appeals. Uh, Board of Zoning Appeals. Right now, Tom Jones is, and I don't know how you guys want to do this, but.
I'll give it up. I mean, somebody wants it. Somebody else want to do planning and zoning?
Speak freely.
Okay. I was just gonna say, would it? Would it be easier to maybe just mention what all boards are there right now? And.
Sure.
I keep forgetting too, so.
Yeah, sure, no problem. Uh, Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals. We have Park, Recreation, Tree Advisory Boards, the Library Board. Uh, Emergency Preparedness Committee. Uh, Convention and Tourism. Um, and then CCUA. And then we also have Board of Health. Brandy had mentioned to me earlier, she, she's interested in convention and tourism. Anybody else have an interest in that? Would need a, a, somebody to be on it and a alternate?
Sir, there's also CRB and Stormwater.
Oh yes, you're right. I got page two. Thanks, I'm new here. Yes, Community Relation Board, Stormwater Management Advisory Board, and then a WAMPO. Okay. Ben?
I would, just because of the consistency for terms, I would encourage keeping, uh, Tom on on WAMPO. Just because he's built several relationships already. Um, if he's amicable to that, I would, I think that would be a good move on our board or commission.
Inherited it. I was representing the Chisholm County Associations of Cities when we went to the bigger board. I just inherited it. So if anybody wants to do it.
Do we have alternates for that one?
Tuesday at three o'clock.
Do we have alternates for that?
Dana Walton is. The, uh, primary has to be elected. The secondary can be an appointment or can be somebody else at staff.
I would be interested on serving as an alternate to learn and to get, to get in there, but I don't know if I would be. I don't know if.
Make.
I, I don't think I'd be ready to take the, the spot, but I'd love to learn.
All right. We'll put Tom as the regular and Ben as an alternate. Okay. So I note on the. The CCUA, I'd like to see, my suggestion would be Kyle. He has a background in water, uh, working at the Water Department. We'll need to fill Melvin's spot on there. And then, of course, our next one is on the agenda for later, but I felt like, uh, if we keep Brandy, uh, and then Kyle.
I'd be fine with that. I'd like to take that on.
And then alternate wise, I was gonna suggest, um, I talked to, uh, former Mayor Ray Mann. He's willing to be an alternate. Uh, and then I, I could be an alternate. So our board members, if our motion later passes, our folks on there would be, um, Jack Whitson, if that passes, Brandy Bailey, and Kyle. Alternates would be Ray and myself.
I have a question to ask. In the history of the CCUA, the mayor's been a primary on there, and you're not gonna do that?
No. The, the times of the meetings conflict with my work, so I, I, I don't want to commit to it and then miss more meetings and the alternates there more often. I don't think that's fair to the board. Does anybody think?
I've done Board of Health before. Was it, is it help, Board of Health?
Okay. And on the Board of Health is normally.
Yeah.
Uh, the mayor serves on it, and then there's a vacant position, which was me prior, and then George Glover's on it.
I'll do it again.
Okay. Are you volunteering?
Yeah. I think George and I did it two years ago.
Okay. Uh, Board of Health's done. CCUA, does anybody have any, anything you want to add to that or, okay?
So CCUA is Kyle, myself.
And then the other one's vacant, but we'll fill that on the agenda.
Right.
Alternates.
Alternates are.
Ray Mann and me. Convention and Tourism?
I've been on the CCUA, it was either a primary or an alternate since it was inception, or right after that, so I'll be off. That's fine.
Well.
No, that's fine.
I, I'm happy to give it to you, but you just wanted me to be on it as.
Okay, good. No, we're good.
Trust me, I'll give it to you. Um, Convention and Tourism?
I do have a question though. Uh, your alternate doesn't live in town anymore.
Doesn't have to.
Wasn't. I, I would like to see it be a Park City resident that be an alternate. Personally.
Any of the council have a problem with that or?
I, I guess my one.
The reason I'm suggesting is, he has a lot of, of vital knowledge of the CCUA, especially in current issues that are going on within the CCUA. Uh, which is also why I'm, I've suggested Jack. I felt like institutional knowledge that they bring to the table is better than I could bring, and. Uh, I, I, I just feel like it's important that we, we stack, stack that board the best we can, and folks that have good knowledge of it. Vital. Okay. All right, Convention and Tourism? I had Brandy down. Does anybody want to step up for the alternate position?
I'll do the alternate.
Ben?
When does Convention and Tourism meet?
Uh, they, early first Tuesday of every other month starts, starts in January. And, and they're actually just changed their meeting times. They're gonna meet at five thirty? Five thirty PM here.
Starting first Tuesday in January?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Emergency Preparedness Committee. Uh, the mayor serves on that, so that'll put me on there. I have George Capps on there. And then I had, I was the other position. Uh, I'm gonna suggest, he's not here tonight, but Charlie to serve on that too, and George, if you're willing to continue on it.
Sure.
Okay, the Library Board, we changed, uh, in the last few months, uh, how our liaison serves on that board. Anybody want to step up and do the Library Board? They meet the second Thursday every other month at seven o'clock. Really short meetings. Anybody? I guess is what we could do is, I mean, we did have the mayor on it, the, as the ex officio member is what they called it, but, I mean, we could put that on the council president position. That way every year. It's chosen, just like it was prior.
I think that's a good idea. Let's make it as council president.
So that one won't be filled just, just today. Okay, Park and Rec. Uh, right now is Ben and George Glover.
I think George has been on it as a, as the member or the alternate all eight years. I've been there for four. I'd like to step off just for a change of, of options.
Anybody else? They meet the first Monday of February, May, August, and November. Five meetings a year. Seven o'clock.
I'll take it.
Okay. Kyle? George, you want to stay as the alternate? Great, thank you. Okay, Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals. Tom's on it right now. You want to continue or?
I will unless somebody wants to step up.
That's fine. Okay, Tom Jones on Planning and Appeals. Planning Commission. Okay, Tom stays on WAMPO. We already did that one. Uh, Stormwater Advisory Board is Ben and George Glover. Ben Sussato, George Glover. I, I mean, I really think this one's important that. Ward two and Ward three probably have the biggest, uh, issues with the drainage that's affected by the Drainage Committee's, uh, involvement.
When does that one meet?
Sorry?
When does that one meet?
Third Tuesday every other, or every month, seven PM.
At, sorry, fourth Thursday. Sorry, fourth Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
As, and it kind of has been as needed lately. Six o'clock.
I, I'd be glad to, Joe.
Okay, thank you, George. And George Glover, do you want to stay, stay as the alternate?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Community Relations Board. Right now is George Glover, Brandy Bailey.
I'd like to step on if possible.
Stay on?
I would like to step on, yeah. I haven't taken a board yet, other than alternate positions.
Help me out? Okay, I'm sorry. Misunderstood. Okay, so Ben will take the reins as liaison. And George will be the alternate. George Glover?
I guess, no, sorry to throw this all off again. We, we put Charlie on the emergency, um, preparedness. Um, but we don't really have him anywhere else. Is that something that we should maybe consider here real quick on this? I was. I, I don't know what his work schedule is, so I don't want to put him on the spot either, and he's not here, but.
Right.
Well, we only have Kyle on one too.
Kyle is an alternate on one, and then he's a member on one.
Oh, what's he an alternate on?
Oh no, he's a member of two.
CCUA and Parks. No, yeah, Parks.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Sir, you're still missing an alternate for the Planning Commission.
Oh yes, I didn't see that one. Alternate for Planning Commission?
I'll do that.
Jim? Jim, would you be good in, uh, having Charlie do Board of Health instead of you?
Yeah, I mean, he's welcome.
I was just thinking with his experience, his job experience would be probably a good thing to have him in there, and then he also, we had him in Emergency Preparedness. Thought both those are pretty good fit for him.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that if he is.
Is that okay? So we'll switch Jim out of Board of Health and add Charlie to that one. Did you get all that?
Yes, sir.
You want, you want to do a read back?
Yes, sir. Under Board of Health, we have the mayor.
Sorry, Tom. Uh, whoever's gonna make the motion to approve these, you'll want to be contingent on what he's saying, just to make it easier for you.
For Board of Health, we have the mayor, George Glover, and Charlie Davidson. For Chisholm Creek Utility Authority, we have Kyle Nordic, Brandy Bailey. Um, and then there's another agenda item tonight. As the alternates, we have, uh, Ray Mann and the mayor. For Convention and Tourism, primary we have is Ms. Bailey. Uh, secondary is Ben. For Emergency Preparedness, we have Councilmember Capps, the mayor, and Councilmember Davidson. For the Library Board, we're gonna assign the council president. For Parks and Recreation and Tree Advisory Board, we have the primary as Kyle Nordic, and the secondary is George Glover. Uh, the alternate, I should say. For Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, we have the primary as Councilmember Tom Jones, and secondary is Jim. Let's see. Under WAMPO, we have, uh, Councilmember Tom Jones as the liaison with Ben as the alternate. And then under Stormwater Management Advisory Board, we have Councilmember Capps and Councilmember Glover. Community Relations Board remains, uh, well, Bend is, uh, stepping up as the liaison, and Councilmember Glover is the alternate.
And put the mayor as the alternate for the Library Board. Behind the council president.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Brandy?
I'll make a motion to approve the council liaisons for Planning Board be Tom and alternate Jim. The Park and Rec Board, Kyle, and the alternate be George Glover. Library Board is the side of the council president, and the mayor is the alternate. Emergency Preparedness is John, Charlie, and George Capps as the alternate. Convention and Tourism is Brandy and Ben in the alternate. CCUA is Kyle, Brandy, Ray, and John, alternates. Board of Health is George Glover, John, and Charlie. CRB is Ben and George Glover is the alternate. Stormwater is George Capps, and George Glover is the alternate, and WAMPO is Tom with Ben being the alternate.
Perfect. Jim?
Second pet.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. No further discussions pending, so all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close? Close? Motion passes eight zero.
I have a question, Joe.
Seven zero.
Seven zero, I'm sorry. I'm out.
I have a question. I I suppose it'll be the next meeting where you where we elect the council president. But what are the city rules in the meantime? Is that the senior member?
Yes.
That would be Tom.
Yes.
And Tom would be standing in until our next meeting. Second meeting in January.
Okay, item fourteen, discuss and consider appointment of Jack Whitson to the Chisholm Creek Utility Authority Board. I I kind of gave my spiel on this earlier, but I felt like Jack has a ton of institutional knowledge of both Park City and the CCUA and the role that it plays with both cities that it serves. So my suggestion is that we appoint Jack to serve on that where his term would expire December of 2023. He's agreed to do so, and he's here tonight. Jim?
Well, Jack, I appreciate your years of continuing to serve the city. So I would move to approve Jack Whitson to the Chisholm Trail Chisholm Creek Utility Board with the term expiring in December 2023.
Tom?
I'll second that.
Good. We have a motion and a second, no pending conversation. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Jack, welcome. Okay, item fifteen, discuss and consider approval of the increase in local match amount to thirty nine thousand seven hundred and seventy nine for the senior center van. Madison? Thanks for coming tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. This year, the city was awarded funding through the fifty three ten program for the purchase of a senior center van. Originally, funds were to cover eighty five percent of costs, leaving fifteen percent left for Park City to match, which would be nine thousand nine hundred and seventy four dollars and seventy cents of the total cost of sixty six thousand four hundred and ninety eight dollars. This amount was approved by council in January 2021. As we have seen with many things throughout 2021, prices have changed. Prices of the cutaway vans has increased significantly due to the vendor being unable to secure chassis from the original contracted manufacturer and the cost of materials increase. The vehicle has now been quoted at ninety six thousand three hundred and two dollars. The grant funding has already been allocated, leaving the federal amount awarded at fifty six thousand five hundred and twenty three dollars and thirty cents and Park City to make up the difference of thirty nine thousand seven hundred and seventy nine dollars and seventy cents. Because Wichita Transit is the recipient of the funds and we are the sub recipients, Wichita Transit must also procure the vehicle to meet federal requirements in order for us to receive the funding. The senior center van was in the vehicle replacement plan, and in 2021, we budgeted forty five thousand dollars for the purchase of a new van before applying for the the fifty three ten funding. Staff recommends approval of this increase in cost.
Tom?
No, this has happened, that's why I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion. This is still a good buy for our van. We've got quite a bit of contribution from the government on it. So I'm gonna move that we approve the increase in local match to thirty nine thousand seven hundred and seventy nine dollars for the senior center van.
Jim?
I'll go ahead and second for discussion, but discussion being, you know, I I really don't feel good at all about being held hostage by someone significantly jacking up the prices of this van, so. But I recognize we need it, and the old one's not in great shape, so. How do and will we lose the match funding if we don't take this? Can we delay it a year, let supply and demand balance out and take another look at this next year? What's what's the alternative to this?
Sure, the alternative for this year would be we take the grant funding or we lose it essentially.
You think they'll have the grant funding next year?
It's possible we'd have to reapply.
Okay.
Ben?
Yeah. So if I understand again correctly, and so in our budget, we did allocate forty five thousand dollars in our budget this year for to replace this vehicle. But anticipated based upon the grant funding, we thought we'd only just spend nine thousand roughly.
Correct.
And so now we're back up to fifty, is it fifty six? Or what's our portion of it?
Thirty nine thousand seven hundred and seventy nine.
So we are still under budget of what we had allocated originally for this vehicle on there. Okay, I wanted to make, sorry, throw out the fifty six number, okay? And I agree, the 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 supply and demand part is a really big pain in the butt. But there's nothing we can do about it, and what would be the, I mean, just for conversation's sake, what's the when you receive funding and then return funding in essence, or don't take the funding? What is the likelihood that they don't approve you the next time around?
You know, I'm not a hundred percent certain on that. I I don't think it would be looked upon too too nicely, but I don't know how that would be put into play.
No, I said it's speculation, so.
Brandy?
Our original amount to match was ninety nine seventy four, and now the difference is thirty nine thousand seven seventy nine. So is it the thirty nine seven seventy nine plus the ninety nine seventy four, or is it thirty nine seventy?
No, that is total.
Thirty nine seven seventy nine.
Correct.
So we budgeted in 2021 the forty five thousand for the purchase, but the funds aren't gonna be expended till 2022. So is it gonna hit 2022's budget versus 2021's budget?
So upon approval, if it is approved tonight, we'd be able to issue a PO for 2021.
Okay.
Yes, of course.
If if I could, sir. We don't like being held hostage either, and we kind of sat there and thought, okay, let's let's look outside the box. And so we called around, we talked to people in Washington State, Minnesota, everything, trying to figure out, well, maybe we could just find a better deal on a cutaway van. Every one of them had indicated that this is just the way things are right now. There is that much of an increase in cutaway vans, and there's not much that we could do with it. And then we went back to it, and meanwhile, Madison had checked with the Wichita is the one that's required under the contract to buy the vehicle. So it's it's kind of outside our control. I do believe that there will be smaller communities that are probably gonna have to say no to the funding, just because of the fact they probably would not be able to take on that kind of substantial hit to their budget. Had they planned on something less than ten thousand, and now it's just under forty thousand. We were very fortunate that it was already programmed into the vehicle replacement plan, so. I appreciate the discussion. That's helpful.
Tom?
I was gonna say that typically this is like a load pro road project. If you opt out, then you can negotiate with somebody and move farther down the list to have a placeholder. But it may be two or three years out, depending on how many people want the van or a van. If you just decide you don't want it, don't do anything, then you try to get back on the list and probably won't have as good a chance going back after you've dropped out. So we either play it or go find another way to buy this van, so.
Good. Thanks, Tom. I I skipped Kyle a while ago, so go ahead, Kyle.
Madison, I have the question. Is the PO gonna be cut to the city of Wichita to procure through their Wichita Transit facility? Or is it going to be cut directly to the manufacturer?
Through Wichita Transit.
Through Wichita Transit, okay. So with that all abstained from the vote due to conflict of interest?
Good. Brandy?
Sean had mentioned now that, or maybe it was Madison who mentioned that some of these smaller communities might not be able to take the funding because they can't increase or afford the increase. So if that happens to be the case, and there might, is there money available that could be reallocated?
That's a good question, but according to my contact with Wichita Transit, she said like our specific amount of funding was already allocated and is therefore capped at that time.
Okay.
Okay, we have good discussion on that. A motion by Tom, second by Jim. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Pass and abstain? Six zero one.
Thank you.
Okay, item sixteen. Sean?
Yes. Discuss and consider approving the exterior grant program and the exterior paint program for 2022. As you know, last year, council approved the exterior grant program and the exterior paint program, both of which have been received well by the community. The exterior grant program, eighteen applications have been received and processed totaling a hundred and seven thousand, just over a hundred and seven thousand dollars in improvements, with the city contributing twenty thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety nine cents. The exterior paint program has had five applications received and two processed so far, only totaling five hundred dollars spent year to date. Staff is proposing that both programs be continued for 2022 with the following specifications. Under the exterior grant program, non-apartment residential properties, minimum twenty five hundred dollars investment by the property owner. The reimbursement amount is a minimum of five hundred dollars and a maximum of twenty five hundred dollars. Eligible improvements include but are not limited to painting, siding, doors, windows, replacement, masonry repairs, awnings, buildings, additions, landscaping, and new construction of a residence. Ineligible items include those but are not limited to playsets, play equipment, swimming pools, spas, sump pumps, foundation repairs, and lawn care or maintenance. Number six, eligibility of improvements not listed are to be determined by the planning department director. All improvements must conform to Park City codes. Property owners must be current on all property taxes for Park City. And the program property must be code compliant with the exception of the violation is to address be to address by the grant program itself. Under the exterior paint program, the program provides up to two hundred and fifty dollars reimbursement for paint and associated supplies. It applies to single-family residential. Multi-family duplexes and rental properties are not authorized or eligible. Property owners, again, must be current on all their property taxes in Park City. And property owners must prepare the property by making any repairs, scraping, cleaning, and preparing the exterior as needed. As far as the fiscal impact for FY 2022, budgeted amount was for all homeowner incentives, a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Because when the budget was conceived, it was done when we still had the home buyer incentives program that has been suspended temporarily. So those all fall under the governing body under housing incentives, so there is money within the budget for 2022. Staff recommends approval.
George Glover?
Yeah, I know we had talked last year about mobile homes being included. Are they being included in this, Sean?
Uh, single-family dwellings are included.
That's mobile home?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Brandy?
I make a motion to approve the 2022 exterior grant and exterior paint programs, allocating fifty thousand to the exterior grant program and ten thousand to the exterior paint program to be paid out of the general fund governing body department.
Tom?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss it, but I'm not gonna second it.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, Ben seconded. Tom?
Uh, when this first came up, it was, we talked about doing a fund for low income or monetarily impacted families that needed to paint houses or do some work on their houses and things like that. And it turned into something more than that and ended up not being that when we voted on it the first time. The people that needed to get paint to paint their houses didn't qualify because it had to be a certain value. So we had people doing houses that had unlimited income, no minimum, no maximum, which defeated the purpose of why we were trying to do it. And I'd like to get back to where we were when we started. We've got some houses that need siding work, they need paint, they need just general things, and the people can't afford to do it. And that was the intent of this to start with. I'm not in favor of the first fifty thousand dollars of this bid or this proposal. I did some computation on current prices for sidewalks in another city. You can get about two thousand feet of sidewalk for fifty thousand dollars. The beds were twenty nine dollars per square yard, and it works out to be a five-foot wide sidewalk, and it's about twenty twenty five dollars a running foot, so installed, so. Anyway, I won't support it. Ben?
Yeah, and I have a question on there, but I also understand where Tom's coming from on this in that the purpose of this is to ensure that those that are having trouble keeping residences within codes and such like that get the support and the ability to do so. You know, twenty five, I agree, twenty five hundred is a little bit high of a minimum because on the exterior grant portion, the number two minimum twenty five hundred dollar investment by property owner. Sometimes they can do little bits at a at a time and bite off in chunks and and do that. And I think that's important that we support those people. If they can only afford to do a thousand dollars, what is, you know, and that's gonna make a difference to help improve the condition of the property. I think that's something that we ought to look at when we're talking about the importance of of an exterior grant program. Depending on where you're at, twenty five hundred dollars is a lot of money to sink in just to start, just to get a reimbursement. And so for the sake of owners, I know Ward three is one that we often deal with, and or is often comes up in terms of code issues and such like that. And I think for our citizens, it'd be best to, or it'd be good to look at this and and maybe a lower amount of a minimum increase or a minimum, I'm sorry, investment to provide help for those situations. The question I had was concerning the difference in exterior grant program. It looks like it's just non-apartment residential properties. And the exterior grant grant program has eliminated rental properties. So according to the exterior grant program, rental properties can apply for this. Is that correct?
Rental properties can, yes. But if somebody owns several of them, they only get one grant per year, because that's the way it was originally proposed. If somebody owned four or five, you better pick the one that you wanted to make the improvements, because you're not gonna.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I that I did read that right. So I mean, I would be in favor of now granted, what is our so minimum twenty five hundred dollar investment, minimum reimbursement amount is five hundred. What's our breakdown on that?
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
So somebody maxes out at the receiving twenty five hundred dollars from the city if they spend twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
So if you did, I guess if you invested twen-
If it was a thousand dollars, they get two hundred dollars back from the city.
Yeah. I would be in favor of that, of lowering that amount to a thousand, just simply for the fact that, again, I think we want to encourage people to be able to to take what they can and make the improvements that they can as they can. So I would I would very much consider and be supportive of lowering that amount to minimum thousand dollar investment with a reimbursement minimum of two hundred dollars.
Okay. If nobody else has lit up, so I think I'll chime in a little bit. I just wonder this. I wonder, I mean, the whole idea of this is to improve the town, clean up the town, especially those areas that are dilapidated structures or less desirable areas or homes. I just wonder if if are we getting more bang for our buck if we focus this on an area of town or a age of home? Like, it must be older than twenty years, twenty five years, or the overall value must be less than X? I'm just, I'm just not sure that me, I I just think there's some improvements you can make, like, you know, if if I add a driveway to the side of my house and it's five thousand dollars, I can turn in receipts for it. But that's really not benefiting the city at all. It's not raising, probably not raising my property taxes. And I just, I just feel like that money's better spent in, for say, the core area of town over in in East Parkview, West Parkview, and Denver, and I mean, in these areas that are sometimes forgotten by all of us and me included. So I just, I just wonder that. I just want to bounce that off of you guys and see, you know, would we be best served with this program for the focus of what it is to put age limit on of house has to be at least X X years old or something like that? So next, I have George Capps.
Well, you know, I got two sisters that live in Ward three. And this summer, they both put in brand new driveways and really spruced up their property, and I don't think they ask the city for anything. But I I I will tell you that- But I, I, I will tell you, the, the, the Ward Three, a lot of people are really working on. There were a lot of new driveways went in over there in that area of town. And I'm not sure any of them's asking the city for anything. Maybe the city's not advertising. I asked my sisters if they pledged, they didn't even know anything about it. So they, they, they started the project, so it didn't bother. But ju- just to talk, you know, you know, you're talking about, the word's not out there. You know, I don't, you, you know, I, I think sometimes we, we depend on, on Facebook and, and some of those things for, to get the word out. And some people just don't, just don't mess with it. You know, a lot, a lot of those people over in Ward Three are charter residents. They, I mean, they came here years ago. Some of those people bought their houses brand-new. And they haven't left and, and they, they're not into computers and, and smartphones. So you, you know, sometimes I think we need a better way of getting the word out.
All right, George, do we put it in the post by chance?
Yes, we do. As well as on Facebook, as well as on website, as well as there's some flares that our code enforcement officers carry around with them just in case they come across somebody that has some code violations. We try to, it's a very fine line. We try to walk, not to offend anybody to. Some people may not want that type of help and, but just, we have that information made available.
And, and George has a good example of what he's saying there. Because my example that I was saying, like, if I were to add an extra thing to my driveway there, that's different, but, but I think over in like East Parkview, West Parkview, I mean, I think that creates good value for the city when someone adds that. And I, I think that should be eligible. So I don't, I definitely don't want to exclude someone, especially over there where we have no parking zone on one side of the street. So on Tuesdays or whatever day it is, but still, folks, I mean, a lot of those houses were built in the fifties and forties and a lot of the, either don't have driveways or they're in very bad shape. So I wouldn't want to exclude those folks from adding a driveway.
Well, John, I guess I'm kind of touched you about Ward Three because those are the people who, who built this city. They're the ones who started it and built it. And uh, some of them, you know, just got an attitude of they, they're not going to ask. Maybe they're too proud. I don't know. My sister didn't even know about the program. I asked them face to face and they said, what? I told them about it and they said, we didn't know about it.
Is, sir, if I may, is there a, a recommendation or, or a way that we could convey the message better?
I, I don't know. Our sign down there, electronic sign, you know, it's, it's hard to convey anything on it. You, you don't really have time to look at it unless you're walking or stopped. So I'm not sure that's a good way. I, I don't know. I don't, I don't have a suggestion for it. I, I, you know, I, I just know the word's not out there.
Yes, sir.
And I think that's a good question. I mean, for all of us as council members, I mean, it's our job too to help suggest to Sean what, what can he do better to get that word out. So if someone thinks of something or comes up with it, I think, I think we need to get this, that's why we're putting it out there. It's not for no one to hear about. So, Tom?
I like your idea where you said maybe a team come together and try to pull together a, a process for this. Don't know if you'd want to head one or appoint one or to look at the, how we ought to handle this. There's, how do we get the message out? I mean, and, and what do we include? Well. In lieu of, I, I would recommend stalling this for a month or two and, and come up with a good process and let the whole world know what it is.
Okay. Let's, let's finish our conversation at least with everybody. Brandy?
So I have two things. So if, as far as advertising or getting it out there, well, everybody in the city gets a water bill, whether it's electronic or in the mail. So is it something we could add to the bottom of a water bill as a note?
No, ma'am, there's limited space on the water bill.
We've tried.
Okay. And then, so we have budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand and we're only right now looking at approving sixty thousand. What's the rest of the money gonna be for? Is it just sitting there for if we run out or if we bring back the housing incentives?
Yes, ma'am. A- as you know, council suspended the, the new homebuyers incentive because of the, the market conditions that we're currently experiencing. But when the budget was put together and everything like that, we had carried over what we had done the previous year and that's where the hundred and twenty-five thousand came into.
And the reason I ask that is because I, I kind of like John's thought where the age of homes or maybe in a specific ward, maybe we need to focus a little bit more in those areas. So maybe we have a, the program where for newer homes, they, they're at a minimum of, of like the, say, twenty-five hundred with a five hundred max, or five hundred minimum payout. And then with these homes that are older, maybe we don't have a minimum on there and it's a, we don't have a, um, minimum investment and we ha- only have a minimum start of a hundred dollars. I mean, I don't know, just, just trying to think of how to get some of those older homes, those people in those older homes to come and, and start trying to improve their homes and, and utilizing some of the availability.
And, and I appreciate that. And we as staff can take this back and come up with a proposed recommendation for council's consideration. And if there's, of course, any recommendations or suggestions from council, we'd be happy to take those. My one concern would be i- if you completely took away the minimums and it's a hundred dollars, let's just say. And there's, we're going to be spending more time processing because everybody that spends a hundred dollars on the weekend is going to be turning it in saying, hey, I want to get twenty bucks back. To me, there, there has to be something that's worth it. And that's why it originally was, it came up with the twenty-five hundred dollar minimum just to, so.
No, and I see that now. So that, that, that makes sense. I mean, I, I get that. So.
It's always been pre-approved.
But also at the same time, something that you had mentioned, depending on the age of the home, maybe there is a sliding scale as far as what the participation is.
Good, Brandy?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yeah, um, so, I mean, I, I know that if we, if we don't do anything, we can always probably, as a council, when we do, come back to a program retroactive for people that might start projects, because we're not meeting until second Tuesday in January.
That's correct.
So, you know, if by some chance somebody on January second decided to start a project or, or whatever, we can retroactively affect or put into place this policy if, if we don't assign any money.
We could, or we could just currently extend the 2021 program under the same terms and condition. And that way then when it's modified.
Okay. Um, two things or three parts that I see in here. I do agree with the, with what John said concerning especially driveways in, in Ward Three and such and, and those. And, and at first I was thinking as far as just maybe eliminating, adding driveways and, but including repair of driveways. But at the same point, Ward Three has the issue with, a lot of them were built with just single-car driveways and we had the parking issue. So I think that's something we could look at. On number four on here, building additions. Since we're looking at um, really the code issues is really where this was kind of meant to begin with, is how to maintain and, and keep code issues from happening. I don't know if we, we want to necessarily pay somebody to add on to their house. It doesn't necessarily address code issues. That just addresses if I want to add on. Now, I'm not opposed to it. I just think that that takes away from that. The other one is new construction of a residence. That's basically the homebuyer's grant put in here. And we already eliminated that. So I think that needs to go. Because we've already stated that we want to, we, we're pausing that.
What if a new homebuyer says, or I'm sorry, a new construction wants, turns in his receipts for painting the house?
So that, I, I'm just saying if we, new, if it's new construction, do we, I mean, just eliminate? Otherwise, we're just giving them the credit anyway. So why don't we just keep the housing credit? The new buyers or new homebuyers. I mean, we're giving out money for new construction when we're another.
This is for upgrades of existing homes, though.
Well, but new construction of a residence is what that last line says.
Sir, it's a valid point. So.
I mean, if, if we want to keep that, that's fine. But I just think that that needs, that part, if we're talking about new construction and we've already eliminated the homebuyers, then let's just take this part out because.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay.
But I also think under number five, that foundation repair should be something that's included because that can quickly become a, an issue of code deal. We're already take, including masonry wor- repair work in number four. So I'm not sure why we wouldn't necessarily look at foundation repair.
If I may, I'm, council probably had various different reasons as far as why they wanted to approve this type program. Some may have thought it was to address more code enforcement issues. Others may have thought to increase the taxable base and the value of the properties. And so that way in number four, where you talk about an addition onto a house, if somebody lives in a house and wants to add on a two-bedroom addition, that's definitely increasing the taxable value and therefore the tax base to the city. May not have been a code enforcement problems at all. Whereas a foundation repair expected to, it's something that really doesn't get seen, doesn't really improve the value of the home. But again, it is code enforcement. So this is however council would like us to proceed. Like I said, we could take this back and come up with some additional recommendations or we're happy to work with a committee of, or take suggestions from council members to, to help better hit the nail on the head for this one.
Am I the last one to speak right now? Is there more?
No, there's more.
Okay, I would just make one recommendation then, and then I'm good. I would suggest then if, if Councilman Bailey would be open to it because I'm just, and, and if everyone agrees is amending it just to simply say minimum a thousand-dollar investment with a reimbursement amount of up to two hundred dollars, just so we can keep this in place, but remove the new construction of a residence. That would be my recommendation. And if other people want to talk in time, that's just my recommendation. And then we can establish a committee to amend as needed.
Let me let her say yes or no on that.
I feel like though there's so much more that has been mentioned here that we need to review. So I think I'll just remove my motion completely and um, make a motion to send it back to staff or bring it, bring it back to meeting.
All right, just point of order, Brandy. If, if you can withdraw your motion and then we can withdraw the second and then we'll finish the conversation and we'll wait for our next.
Yeah, I'll just withdraw my motion.
Okay. Jim?
I like the program and I, I think it's a good, it's a good thing. I, I'm definitely in favor of it. So if we can improve it or if there's an issue where some people weren't qualifying for it, I, I support that if it means lowering the, the limits, maybe to a level that doesn't cause twenty-dollar reimbursements for, for the city staff. So I think this is all a great discussion. My one point I wanted to make is I work in a, in a, a world of lending where you cannot discriminate to, on a home in any area. So if we start talking about doing it in one ward and not another, I would like some research done to make sure we're not discriminating.
Good.
That was my only comments.
Good point. Thank you, George Glover.
Yeah, I know I, I, some of my residents are elderly, disabled. And one of the problems they have is knowing how to apply for some of these incentives. I like the idea of maybe sending out a flyer or something, a half-page flyer. Maybe even having a workshop here and on a, on a day or a half-day and having the folks, give them a phone number where they can come in and maybe talk to us about how do I apply? Because a lot of elderly people, they don't know how to apply, a lot of disabled people. So we can go ahead as a, as a council, go ahead and address that and let them know, you know, calm their fears, if this is how you do it and we're going to help you do it. Thank you.
Tom?
I'd like to be a part of a group if we're going to pull one together to figure out how we're going to do this.
Okay. So I think we just take no action and if Tom and Ben and I will provide some input too and other, other council members, if you want to pipe in and give Sean some feedback as well for communication and stuff, we can do that. But I think we've had plenty of discussion on this.
I have another point that I was going to make when I pushed the button. And that is I don't think there's any ward that doesn't have somebody that would qualify no matter what the threshold is. Ward Four is pretty big. And Ward One's pretty big. So I mean, I, I don't think you'd be amiss leaving all four wards there. So it's.
Okay, no action on that item. We'll move to item seventeen.
Mayor and council, um, back in February, um, the council approved a quote from Versa Sports to construct three pickleball courts up there at McLean Park for a total cost of twenty thousand nine hundred dollars. As we all recall, Versa Sports didn't fulfill the obligation of the contract and we ended up sending it back out to bid as MultiCon LLC was approved that contract and, and constructed the concrete portion of those pickleball courts. So um, the pickleball courts are done, the concrete's cured now, so we can finally get to the installation of nets and the painting and that kind of stuff. So we reached out several contractors to install the net systems and perform the, the paint work. We received two bids back, one for MultiCon and another from Versa Sports. MultiCon is the company that we contracted to do the pickleball court at the senior center. They did a really great job. It turned out pretty nice. And with Versa Sport not fulfilling their obligation of constructing the pickleball court under the first contract, my recommendation is to use MultiCon Incorporated for a total of eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, Tom?
Oh, was that from the last time?
That was last time.
Sorry.
Um, Jim?
I remember our discussions from earlier with issues with contractors. So I would go ahead and move to approve the contract with MultiCon Inc. to install nets and paint the three pickleball courts in McLean Park in the amount of eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to be paid out of the general fund parks department.
Tom? Thank you. Brandy?
And are we going to look at adding fencing around, fencing around this court as well like we did the senior center?
Right. Um, so we discussed that when we did the concrete portion or I discussed it with you guys here at, at the council meeting. We installed the fencing around the pickleball court at the senior center because of the proximity of the parking lot. And that's the reason we did that there. If you guys wish for us to do that there at that, that setup, we, I could pursue gathering bids to have that done there as well. And, and lighting as well, so.
Yes, I think lighting and fencing is necessary.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree. I believe lighting probably is necessary. And then fencing, I, I guess we can just kind of see how, how that works. But I'd definitely like to look into lighting.
Thank you, Brandy. Kyle?
Simon, I got two questions here. Question number one, with the Versa Sport not fulfilling their original contract, was anything done with Versa Sport? Did you require any performance bond or statutory bond on that contract?
Their original contract wasn't that great in the amount. I don't remember what they, twenty thousand nine hundred dollars. The bid portion of that, I don't think would have been very substantial anyways. So no, to my knowledge, no, we, we did not.
Okay. Uh, second question being, now that we have already identified that potentially fencing and lighting is going to be installed as well or has the potential to be installed, why was that not originally thought of in the beginning as an overall project and bid out as one major source?
Right. Probably due to the overall cost. If we primed that out to one contractor to do all that, the bids would have come in substantially higher than breaking it down because we have electricians that specialize in electrical stuff. We have concrete companies that specialize in concrete stuff. It's, it's similar to the road improvement project that we just did. I sent it out as a big bid for all that work to be done, but the, one contractor wasn't able to fill all the obligations of that contract. So they had subcontracted out. When they subcontracted, the costs go up because they're having to pay the co- the subcontractors, but also their overhead also that was dealing with that. So if I contracted out individually, the cost tends to be lower.
Thank you, sir.
George Glover?
Yes, Simon, what do you, what is the timetable for getting this stuff done? Do you know as far as completion?
Yes, sir. So MultiCon said they would, they would get started on it within the next few weeks. So I assume it'd be done either by the end of the year or, or right at the very beginning of next year.
Okay, thank you. Weather dependent.
Dependent.
Yeah, weather dependent.
Man, speaking of wind. Tom?
I was just going to say, I'm going to tag on to what Kyle said. We always do things where we want a pickleball court, we decide we're going to do the platform for it. And then we come back and we add to it. It'd be nice to know upfront what the general cost would be if we do the whole thing. It doesn't, just a ramp or ROM price because skateboard park originally was twenty thousand. It doesn't, just a ramp, a ROM price, because skateboard park originally was $20,000, and last I saw, we had $200,000 in it. So, and I mean, it's a class act now, but, but that was sold to this council as being a $20,000 project.
And, and we're way different now.
It's bubbled, I mean, you know, and we all, all this stuff does that, we never know what the whole project's going to be, or what the estimate's going to be, or if we're going to stop, so.
Okay. And that was 20 years ago, and the city operates way different than, than back then. And I will say, like, in this project, we, we set aside about $50,000, I believe, in the budget for, for parks, for this to happen, and I think we're, we're really falling in line with, with what that is, and, you know, we're not paying a general contractor to just oversee the whole thing, our folks are doing it and saving us a little bit of money on, on that. So, no more discussion? We have a motion by Jim and a second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, Sean?
Yes, sir, discuss and consider the approval of bids from McCullough Construction for water, sanitary sewer, stormwater drainage, and paving improvements for Ironstone Edition Phase One. Phase One is located west of Hillside and south of East 69th Street North. The developer, Elite USA LLC, presented petitions for water, sanitary sewer, stormwater drainage, and paving improvements in June of this last year, and was approved by the council. A bid opening was conducted on December 8th with a total of five companies submitting bids. McCullough Construction submitted the lowest bid of $657,645.40, which is below the engineer's estimate of $848,153. And you can see I haven't broken down there for the various amounts for water, sanitary sewer, stormwater drainage, and paving and stormwater sewer. Attached also in your packet are copies of the bid tabulation and the McCullough contract. It is budgeted and staff recommends approval.
Ben?
It's good to see those bids come down a little bit from what we budgeted, it's good to see something on that end rather than going over. So I'd make a motion to approve the bid tabulation and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute a contract with McCullough Construction, amount not to exceed $657, $645,040 to be paid out of the capital projects fund.
Jim?
Second.
Kyle?
Sean, I do have a question regarding the bid analysis for McCullough. In looking on there, it looked like there's some line items there that potentially were drastically less than others. Did anybody reach out to make sure that that was the correct amount that was bid in, and we didn't accident, or they didn't accidentally miss a zero or anything like that?
That is correct. Our city engineer, K. Miller, has reached out to the company to verify it prior to issuing the bid tabulation.
Awesome, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, seeing no more discussion, we have Ben motioned and Jim seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes seven, zero. Item nineteen, Sean?
No, not Sean.
That'd be Simon.
Simon?
So back in June, the council approved the change order with Mice Construction to relocate and make improvements certain water lines adjacent to and in support of the Newcastle Street realignment. Back on November 29th, Public Works Personnel attempted to shut down the Newcastle area, utilizing existing waterline map and as-built drawings. The shutdown, unknowingly affected most of the southwest quarter of the city, and the water had to be turned back on to avoid a boil water. We found out during the shutdown that the valves in the area were seized, and they had, we had to exorcise them to get them properly sealed off. We also found more issues in our mapping, because the map shows water lines looping the entire southwest quarter of the city. And, and they were, of course, I don't know that they are. Because of these issues, McCullough had to move away from the site for the time being and reschedule the work while we find out how to isolate the Newcastle section, and what, what areas would truly be affected by the shutdown. This rescheduling has resulted in change order in the amount of $8,980 to pay for the lost labor time and the installation of an eight-inch valve that was prior, unknown prior to the excavation. There's actually an eight-inch C-900 water line that goes to the north to Navajo Estates, and that valve in the ditch, it actually goes to that, that line, we didn't know that that line existed. This project is budgeted, the purchase will be paid utilizing the capital projects fund sixty, 61st Street.
Jim?
Okay, I would move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the change order, number one, revision number one, with McCullough excavation in the amount not to exceed $8,980 to be paid out of the capital projects fund.
Brandy?
I have the motion.
Okay, seeing no more discussion on this, motion by Jim Schroeder, seconded by Brandy Bailey, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you.
Item twenty? Doug?
Mayor and council, in 2012, the city of Park City and the city of Bel Air entered into an agreement that modified the agreement that each city had with the CCUA as far as the provision of water to each city. At the time, this was done primarily to facilitate some difficulties that Bel Air was having, and there was a reallocation of the amount of water to be purchased in the calendar year 2013, and the parties agreed that based upon how much water each city purchased in that year, that the operating costs would be trued up at the end of the year to reflect the percentage that each city took of the total that was produced by the, by the water plant that year. That was a one-year agreement, it subsequently renewed and less terminated by either city, and it's been in place since 2013. In 2015, there was a similar agreement that dealt with wastewater, and a similar concept of truing up at the end of the year based upon how much wastewater each city provided to be treated by the sewer plant. Both these agreements really modify significantly what the original agreement is between each city and the CCUA, where there's a take-or-pay concept, and, and there is a true-up, but not in the same way that these two agreements provided. What I didn't make clear in this, in my staff summary is, it's important that we have this in front of us now, because if we're going to terminate this, we need to do it by year's end. If you don't terminate it by year's end, it rolls over. The wastewater agreement really never became, never became effective, because one provision in that was that CCUA would install some meters so that it could accurately meter the affluent that each city was providing to the CCUA for treatment at the sewer plant. One additional matter that wasn't, that's not reflected in the staff summary is that Bel Air had their city council meeting on December 7th of, of this, of this month, and they've terminated both these agreements. That's really a function of some contention that has existed probably for the last several months between the staff of both cities. Bel Air, in light of these two agreements, wants to even, in, in the opinion of, in my opinion, in the opinion of the, of the city administrator, further modify the agreements in ways that really reflect badly on the, the ability of Park City to efficiently provide water and treat sewage for its citizens, and really threatens to, to raise rates if we agree to those sorts of things. And the cities were kind of at loggerheads, and so it was felt in the best interest of the city that we just terminate these agreements, back up, and if there's discussions to be had about how we might modify things, or how we might deal with difficulties that either city was having, that that's something that should occur next year, without the, the pressure of this agreement rolling over again, which really doesn't benefit the city of Park City. So that's a long-winded explanation to say that we really, staff is recommending that we terminate both these agreements, that the 2015 wastewater agreement was never effective, but for purposes of clarity, terminate both the 2012 water relocate, water reallocation agreement between the city of Park City and Bel Air, and the 2015 agreement reallocating wastewater between the city of Park City and the city of Bel Air.
Okay, before we start, I just want to ask you, will this termination of this, just for those watching at home, so we don't have anybody freaking out by this termination, will this termination of this agreement have any effect on our residents' water or sewer services?
None whatsoever.
Okay, all right, just want to clear that up.
Brandy?
I just want to say, I feel like this is beneficial to Park City, more beneficial than it is to Bel Air, so I make a motion to terminate the September 12, 2012 water allocation agreement between the city of Park City and city of Bel Air, and the December 15, 2015 wastewater operating expense allocation agreement between the city of Park City and the city of Bel Air.
Tom?
I'll second that, and I have a question that, I don't know if it can be answered. This was set up because Bel Air didn't want to take half of the water, or whatever the allocation was at the time, and so are they going to start taking that water?
Well, it's really, it's a take-or-pay, and when this goes away, they're obligated to pay for half the water, whether they take it or not, they're obligated to pay for it.
Okay, because that's been contention in the past where we did the agreement, because they didn't want it, and we took it, and so we're, they're served now, okay.
That's correct, this is much, much more favorable to the city going forward, the city of Park City going forward.
Correct, I just wanted clarification.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, motion by Brandy, seconded by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes seven, zero. All right, item 21, which was added tonight. Doug?
Mayor and council, this is another one of those year-end matters that came up at the last minute, obviously, that's why it's added to the agenda after we published it. The legislature, it has to do with the opioid settlement that's been reached against the drug companies that, I don't want to be, that peddled opioids and caused a real epidemic throughout our country, and increased the costs of government, law enforcement, mental health, treatment, all those sorts of things. And so there's been a significant millions of dollars paid in settlement of this, and it's being distributed throughout the states. Our attorney general has been involved, attorney general of the state of Kansas, in, in a lawsuit on behalf of the state. Several municipalities in the state have also hired their own attorneys and, and taken part in this class action against the pharmaceutical companies. But our legislature in its last session passed House Bill 2079, which is titled Kansas Fights Addiction Act, and, and what that did is, it set up a division of the funds that, that the state of Kansas is going to receive in this settlement, setting aside 75% for these municipalities and the state for the settlement that they've reached litigating this, but also setting aside 25% to be divided up among municipalities that have incurred expenses and costs in connection with the opioid epidemic, but who didn't actually file, join in the lawsuit of the class action. And the mechanism for doing this is to enter into an agreement, the city of Park City with the Kansas Attorney General, where we release our claims to the Attorney General and any future claims that are related to this, this opioid settlement, and then, and then the Attorney General, I'm a little over my skis on this, on who's going to decide how this is dabbied up, and that may be part of the legislation, but then those monies are distributed in some manner to the, to the cities that didn't join in the settlement to cover costs that they've incurred. So we need to do this resolution to authorize staff to negotiate the agreement with the Attorney General before January 1 of 2022, and then, at that point, we will be eligible for any grant funding that might be available as a result of this settlement, and, and a payment for the expenses that the city has incurred, which in the resolution, we certified to be in excess of $500. I can give you, from a seminar that I attended earlier this year, this, this sort of settlement is likely to not be, likely in excess of $500 in the resolution, it's likely to be relatively substantial when it comes out. So I can't tell you exactly what we would receive, but I think it would be more, more like five figures, or more like five figures as opposed to a nominal amount of $500. Again, maybe all of us get these things in the mail from time to time, where we may be subject to being part of a class, and we might recover money, and it turns out that for all the effort that you put in, you get a check for $1.98. This is a little better than that, and staff will be working between now and the end of the year to get our, to get us in line to be part of this distribution. So I'd recommend that you adopt a resolution number.
Ben?
I'd go ahead and make a motion to adopt resolution 1102-2021.
Tom?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion passes seven, zero. Moving on to governing body reports, Jim?
Well, I look forward to getting Mr. Davison sworn in, and I wish him and his family a speedy recovery. Kyle, welcome, looking forward to working with you. Melvin, I'm glad to have served with you, and I thank you for all your time that you've dedicated over the years. John, welcome to the new seat. The other thing was just to comment on the, the Christmas tree lighting, I really enjoyed that, that looks really nice out front, so I wanted to thank everybody that set that up and made that happen, and I hope that becomes an annual thing every year with the, the Christmas tree lighting that was, I appreciate everybody that came and participated in that.
Brandy?
I just want to say, welcome, Kyle, looking forward to serving with you, and Charlie, when Charlie gets sworn in. Welcome, John, I'm excited to have you as our mayor, and looking forward to seeing what you can, what you do for the city. The Christmas tree lighting ceremony, like Jim said, it was, we had a great turnout, I think it was one of our bigger events for the first time that we had these trees out there. I've heard lots of great comments about it, people were excited about being here, seeing Santa, it was just a really good evening, so I appreciate everybody that did come out and make that event happen and be a success like it was.
George?
I would say congratulations to everyone that won the reduction, and, and same to you, John, welcome to the seat, got the hot seat. You know, I, we lost a great American, I think, in Bob Dole, whether you agree with him politically or not, the fact is, he, he went, he served, he was severely wounded, and he continued to serve. He, he was a great Kenyan, in my opinion. Sadly, most of the World War II veterans are, are passing into history. And, you know, I would say to the younger people, you know, it might be nice to keep a journal on these things, you know, I, I was thinking about this, about Bob Dole, and, you know, in my lifetime, I've seen the Civil War veterans, the veterans of the Indian Wars, Spanish-American War, World War I, they faded into history, and, you know, I, I was fortunate, I consider myself fortunate enough to know some of these people, and they were great Americans, and, you know, I just, that's all I have.
Thank you, George. Tom?
I got a few things, I'm just going to rattle on here. We amended our plan at WAMPO today to include a KDOT proposal of K-96 to, from 135 to Greenwich Road to widen it, and they're working on right-of-way funding and utility funding to get that moved. 235 from Meridian to Broadway's, done, so they're just cleaning up now, and the rest of it's on track, but it's going to take a couple of years.
And the rest of it's on track, but it's gonna take a couple of years. Secretary's gonna have announcement tomorrow at eleven o'clock, transportation on what the new projects are gonna be and everything that's going on. State's talking about sales tax on food, and right now, they're looking at reducing the state's sales tax but leaving local sales tax on, so there'll be some people upset about that probably, but then there's gonna be some people happy with it. So, local sales tax will stay on it. Since, I think Sedgwick County's got a one-cent sales tax, it would probably stay on there.
Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank every one of the council members here for the warm regards, for allowing me to come on. Thank you to the community members who put on our Christmas program. It was a very nice event, one of the first events that I had the privilege of attending. And I look forward to being here, and I look forward to serving the citizens of Park City. Thank you.
Ben.
Yeah. I want to say welcome to Kyle and Charlie watching from home. They get feeling better. George mentioned the passing of Bob Dole, and Bob was, Senator Dole was the first person in politics I ever met in nineteen ninety-six as a young thirteen-year-old going to a presidential campaign. And he taught us a lot about how to be a statesman versus how to be a politician. And again, that's something that we severely lack, is just the ability to agree or disagree and stay civil and be friends. And George mentioned just the fact that we're losing our World War II veterans in Wichita, and Sedgwick County lost another great one in Rip Gooch. Rip Gooch was a World War II Army serviceman who came to Wichita after the war and started his own company. He was an inspector for Boeing for a number of years. He served on Wichita City Council and the Kansas Senate, ninety-eight years young, and a great, another great American, World War II veteran that we lost just in November. And so, time goes by. And just this evening, when I was sitting here, I got a message from a friend that I grew up with. Well, not from them, because he passed away tonight from a brain tumor. And just a reminder that life is short, and so take advantage of the time you get. We're at Christmas time, and we're at New Year's time, and so make sure to enjoy that time with family and friends. And so I do want to wish all of you Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and thank you to the citizens of Ward Three for letting me serve another four years. And then if you want to come out on Saturday at ten, no, nine o'clock, nine o'clock at Daylight Donuts will be there for the convos, so love to have you join me.
George Glover.
Yeah, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as we get ready to celebrate the birth of our Lord and Savior. I'm encouraged by our new council members, what they could bring to our council. I'm really encouraged for the citizens of Park City and what's gonna happen in 2022. So I'm encouraged by that, and also the staff as well, so look forward to that.
Thank you, George. Okay, all, the two fifty-four meeting was on the tenth here. We had a good conversation. KDOT was here, gave a presentation, and they did mention the K ninety-six project, also the entire North Junction project. But that K ninety-six project is definitely in the forefront, and the plans for that, they're gonna add three lanes in both directions. So that should relieve a lot of the congestion over in that area. So a lot of really good things, and thanks to Sean for stepping up and hosting that two fifty-four corridor meeting here. It was very good, and huge effect on Park City. Next thing, I'd say the Christmas tree lighting. I thought that went fantastic, especially for our first one. We had a great turnout, I think we were probably under three hundred people, but the place was packed. And it was great, we had probably the greatest Santa I've ever seen here doing pictures with kids, and man, he had the real Santa laugh down. I mean, it was amazing. So I can see that event growing really well next year, and thanks to the governing body, because Kyle included, prior to being sworn in, even was there with us. And I think that really makes a great statement of our unity and our service to citizens of doing events like that. So I say thanks to each of you guys for sacrificing your night to come to that. I thought it was a great thing. Our Community Relations Board, hats off to them for putting that entire thing together. They've just had a great year in 2021 of putting off all these events after COVID. So the one thing I would say as a council, I'd like to see us continue. We have a great Christmas tree out here, but I'd like to see us keep that going. So let's not stop at a Christmas tree, and if we can add some lights, and more lights, and some more stuff to go with it for every year, and help that grow. So, the next thing, I'd say, home permits. I just wanted to say, I had, I found a thing in my box, I'm not sure how long it's been in there, but for the first three quarters of the year of our city, and this is keeping in mind about the change in our incentive program, this year, we're, as of the end of October, we're at ninety-nine home permits for new homes. Where last year, for the entire year, we were at forty-nine. Obviously, that was COVID. The year before, in 2019, we were at sixty-seven, and 2018, we were at eighty-three. So good, great momentum, great growth, and good opportunities for us with what's coming to town. Next thing, governing body manual. Each of you guys saw the thing that I mentioned the last time, a governing body manual. Is what I'd like to do, and we'll see kind of how things, as we get closer, since we aren't having our next meeting we're gonna have in January. What I'd like to do is maybe us get together forty-five minutes early before the next meeting and go over a few little bits and parts of it, because this is a moving target. It's not set in stone that this is how things are, this is a guide. And if you got, any of you guys, between now and then, maybe go through the first, I don't know, five or six chapters or areas. They're fairly short, but help us mold it to what we want our product to be for the city. It's not a silver bullet that's gonna solve everything, but I think it is very helpful for us to know what to expect of each other during meetings and whatnot. So, anyway. That is all I have. Ben?
Make a motion, adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion, non-debatable motion by Ben and Jim.
Second.
A motion by Ben, seconded by Jim Schroeder. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.